Review those. Bill Farnsworth reviewed them, as did I, and there are two comments he's made. At the very beginning, under Members Present and Alternate Members, he's asked to insert a line that says at 7:15, "The meeting was called to order by Chairman Gould." And then on page two, "The 170 Air Road case was missing its number," so we've inserted the number in there. I think this is the meeting that I took minutes on, and so I think there's a little choppiness to the wording, but...
One other thing in here, I notice she's got in here, she's got question marks. Didn't know who approved it.
Oh, on... I'm sorry, where are you reading?
Melissa Robbins. Yeah, she doesn't have them yet.
Oh, on the Manion Place discussion?
Yeah. Move back to grant the modification. And who made and seconded this motion? And then under Administrative Matters, the next one, there was a couple of question marks in there.
I don't remember on Melissa Robbins' discussion. It was just a discussion. It didn't have to be a motion for approval. What was, if you recall, what happened with Manion Place? Is that we had approved it, and Melissa Robbins was supposed to put it into a format for a decision to be signed, and she had neglected to do that. So she came back to do it. When she did come back to do it, the board asked some questions about whether the work had been done, because there were some tree plantings to take place.
That statement should just come out of there, then.
So it was moved?
Because you have any of Patrick Joyce?
I just don't know where you are. Are you on the third page?
Let's hold off on this, because I hadn't got through there. I hadn't backed up into that, so. October meeting, 2012.
Wait, I'm still on June.
Yeah, I know. There's a line right above it.
Yep. There's Melissa Robbins.
Yeah, but in Administrative Matters? That's a different one I have.
What I would suggest is that we take out of that one, I don't want to let Junes go without being voted. We take out of that one the sentence that says, "Chair Gould appointed Patrick Joyce to be the fifth voting member for the hearing, because we don't need one." And take out...
And we move to grant.
The board agreed to sign the modification, okay? Agreed to sign the modification to the comprehensive permit. And just to get out changing to July 15th, because I don't know what that means. As prepared by Melissa Robbins, seconded by Shelley Hanga, we can take that out. And then the board sign the request. So now I'll ask for the motion to approve is amended.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second, please. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was a second. Are you going to appoint a fifth, fifth member?
Oh, for the minutes. Rod, you're fifth member for approving the minutes?
Oh, aye.
Okay. Okay, next is the October 16th minutes, and you seem to think there's more changes to that. I think we'll wait for Shelley to come back on those.
Yeah.
Because we'll give everybody a chance to read them. I just didn't want Junes to stay that stale.
Yeah.
Okay? Okay, any news to report? Anybody have anything to discuss? Nothing? How about mail?
The first apartment building is framed.
Oh, yeah.
15 Gray Road.
Has anyone been down on a drive-through or a second?
I have.
Did they take you, or did you go yourself?
No, I just lurk around in the weekend.
You can't drive through there?
I'm sure you could. It's just a very busy site. There's a lot going on.
The full light bill, you know, for the, usually contract.
Oh, you went down in the office.
But you just drive down toward Bobby's Ranch, and you can see them.
Yeah, I didn't realize they'd start it there. The houses are coming along.
Any mail? Did you get any mail over on your side?
What's the one under Eminem?
Eighteen. Oh. Oh, she gave you that part, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to...
I believe the information for possible December 18th meeting did not come in. So therefore...
I'm pretty sure it did not come in, and there is no December 18th meeting.
All right.
So our next meeting will be the third Thursday in January. We'll be back on a regular schedule. I'm confused...
I thought we were meeting in two weeks. We're not going to meet in two weeks.
No, that the materials for that meeting didn't come in. So there's no reason to have that meeting. Which is nice. It was all a break. I'm confused about tonight, though. I thought that we had Omni coming, Mark Gallagher, coming before us on the houses, and I thought that was one of the reasons to have this.
I thought we had it for Mr. Royal.
It's for, okay. It was a continuation for Mr. Royal.
Royal, aight.
And I was told that Mark Gallagher and Dave Hale had some urgency, urgent matters to bring before the board. And so I thought they were going to be on for tonight, too.
In talking to Shelley yesterday, she was still waiting for them to submit something. And as of this afternoon, she did not indicate that she got anything on that, because no, she was going to forward it.
Well, one of the things that was discussed this past week is David Hale has proposed, has made a request to the Building Inspector about issuing some certificates of occupancy before all the infrastructure is done. And the special permit decision allowed that that could happen if a performance bond was in place. So there were some discussions this week with Town Council, Mr. Hale, and Roland Bernier about sort of the parameters for that performance bond and whether or not that had to come before the board. And the decision reads, "Such that I do not believe the board gets involved in that bond." I think it's between Town Council and the Building Inspector. But I did ask that David Hale furnish to Town Council and to the Building Inspector a firm written set of estimates for completion, so that we're not short if and when there's a problem. And I asked him to make sure that the conservation completion was part of those estimates, because at one point, the chairman of the Conservation Commission called and asked if she could ask for her own bond. And I think I checked with Ed and with the powers that be, and they said the Conservation Commission couldn't ask for a separate bond. So I assured her that if we had a performance bond in place, that I would make sure to pass the information on to Roland and Town Council that they take a bond for everything.
So what's the nature of the infrastructure that won't be in at the time?
Finished completion of the road.
Oh, okay.
And the chalk quote and things like that.
Okay, not the, not the septic?
It can't be. They have to have...
Yeah, I was going to say, how would that work?
Can't occupy without the septic being done. And there was, that was the back and forth all week. David Hale was insistent that there already was a bond and that the infrastructure would be completed. But he was only thinking about the septic system, and I'm more concerned about the roads being done. And the other thing I'm really concerned about, and I'm watching from the sidelines, if you will, but inputting my two cents. I've seen planning board takes performance bonds a lot and then never have a means to get the money out when the developer fails to do it. So you're always hearing or seeing planning board meetings where the homeowners are complaining that the roads didn't get done.
Well, Grismel went on and on pretty soon.
Grismel went on and on. And planning board often sits and says, you know, the performance bond is in place. We can use that. But I never see them use it and actually finish. So I wanted to be sure there was enough money and that there was a mechanism for getting it out. Okay? Not that I want zoning board to be finishing roads, but you want the owners to have some satisfaction.
That's the purpose.
Yeah. All right, we have two more minutes. And since there's nobody filling the room, I am going to start one minute early on this. We had a continued here, oh. We had a continued hearing for 7:30 for Mr. Royal on case number 839A. And I'm going to call it to order in a minute. I will just relay to the board that Mr. Royal has submitted an application to withdraw. So let me open the hearing and appoint a fifth voting member. It's within seconds of 7:30, so I'm going to call it. 7:30. I'm opening the continued hearing of case number 839A, the case of 8 Blood Road, case of Joseph Royal on a request to withdraw without prejudice. His application for a variance to build a two-story garage at 8 Blood Road. Anybody want to speak to, oh, let me just say, we sent a message to Mr. Royal that it's our practice at this board that the applicant has to be... Thank you. Appoint a fifth voting member. So Ellen, you're it.
Okay.
We sent a message to Mr. Royal that it's our practice at this board that we ask the applicant to be present when they're seeking to withdraw. Because, as you know, the board has the option of denying the withdrawal and acting on the application. And he wrote today, no, on December 3rd, he wrote a letter to Shelley. "Hi Shelley, when I first requested to withdraw the petition on November 14th, my understanding was my attendance was not required at the ZBA meeting. I've since made plans for Thursday, December 4th." Joe Royal. The letter he sent to withdraw was, "Hi Michelle, we would like to withdraw our application for a special permit variance without prejudice to construct an addition to the house located at 8 Blood Road. We are working with an architect on an alternate design, so the addition won't require a variance. Thank you and the ZBA for their patience and guidance throughout this process. Could you please confirm that we will not be on the agenda for the ZBA December meeting? Thanks, Joe Royal." So I'll ask the board's pleasure in entertaining the motion to withdraw without an... Is anyone here for Joe Royal? Okay.
Do we know, this was written back in November. Do we know that he has? I presume he has settled on something else or looking into other avenues?
"We are working with an architect on an alternate design, so the addition won't require a variance."
That was dated November 14.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the last we heard. Does anyone want to speak to this? Do we want to entertain a motion to withdraw?
I think it's a good outcome. And I think when, if he speaks about our guidance, I think this would have been our explicit guidance if we'd been explicit about it.
I have no problem with his request to withdraw. I don't think it's fair that he didn't have some representatives show up. We have always, I mean, the board has a right to deny it, because he's not here. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. But I have, I agree with you. It's the right outcome, and he went in the direction we asked him to go. So what do you think?
I think I would grant his request and keep on without prejudice.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion?
I didn't make the motion now. The board approves the request to withdraw without prejudice, the petition in regards to 8 Blood Road.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Who's the second on that? Ellen?
Ellen.
Thank you. Okay. I think we had another 7:30 scheduled, so Littleton Zoning Board of Appeals will open the hearing of case number 843, the case of 620 Great Road by John Resnick for a special permit from Section 173-58 for an accessory dwelling. I don't know if any of you have been here before. The way we conduct the meetings is that, Mr. Resnick, you'll come forward and state your case for your application. We're pretty informal. You can sit or stand, it doesn't matter. When you're finished, the board will ask questions. Some will ask if there's anybody here who wants to speak to your petition. Then we'll allow you to speak again if you need to. And then we'll act on your petition, hopefully. Okay?
Fifth voting member.
So have to appoint a fifth voting member. And how about Patrick? Okay, you're welcome to start.
Just here for an application to make an in-law partner.
Describe the property. Describe the relationship. Describe what it is under the door.
Okay. The garage left existing. We're going to be squashing that, rebuilding it. There's going to be living space above the garage. There's a large breezeway. Used to be, geez, I think, I'm going to say it's 24 by 20, maybe? Breezeway. Used to be lukewarm antiques.
And so used to be that?
Used to be lukewarm antiques. That spot there will be the primary living space. Kitchen, bathroom, stuff like that. And what's the breezeway now. And then the garage would just be, the second floor of the garage would be a loft area. One room, if you will. The property itself is between the church and some conservation. There is a septic plan filed for eight bedrooms, or eight rooms, I believe. We will be scaling that back just a little bit. There are some sketches, I believe, in the file of what we're looking to do for the house. We're not going to be concentrating on the house right now. We're going to be just concentrating on the garage and the in-law.
I didn't hear what you said about the septic. It's for how many bedrooms?
Eight rooms right now.
Permitted for eight rooms? How many bedrooms?
Eight bedrooms. Eight bedroom.
Oh, eight bedrooms.
Sorry. We will be scaling that back just a little bit, I imagine.
And how many bedrooms are in the house now?
There's three right now.
So you're not increasing the footprint? So basically, you're taking the existing, you know, if you, existing structure, and you're tearing some down, building it up?
In terms of foundation work?
Yeah.
No. I mean, let me rephrase that. We're not expanding the foundation. We will be potentially repairing some of the garage foundations.
Okay. Reason I ask is because, you know, typically, the other thing to look at is how the project fits on the lot. Assume that, I mean, it doesn't seem, one of the things we need to assess is whether there are any non-conforming conditions. It doesn't seem like there is.
No, with the original drawings that we submitted, or at least that we had drawn up way back when, the garage was going to be twice as deep. And we were needing the variance and, or make a long story short, finances and size-wise, it was, they're scaled back just a little bit.
What is the statute of law? Is it maker?
I believe so. I'm not sure.
And, thank you. And what's the parking situation on that property?
It's a fair amount of parking. I would say 46 vehicles.
Okay, any board members with questions?
Yeah, if we just go through the criteria, I don't think there's been enough discussion to cover us all the points.
Okay. Go ahead.
Who's going to be, first of all, you're tearing down the existing house and building another house?
Oh, jeez, no.
Just the garage.
Just the garage.
All right, the plan that we have found is from David E. Ross Associates.
Yes.
Shows an existing house and then a proposed, you know, the proposed addition, proposed deck, proposed garage.
The deck from Ross Associates?
Yep.
I believe that they were just designing a septic system. The plans that you're looking at were through Littleton Lumber Company. Those plans were, we're not going to be going with those.
Oh, okay.
There should be another set of plans.
Give it to us in the package.
If I can make it more confusing for you, let me know.
And... Have you scaled the size of the garage down since you applied? When you first made application, was it bigger?
Four, about a year ago?
No. This last month?
Yes. That's the sketch right there.
Is that what you're proposing to do now?
Yes.
That is smaller than what was shown as the Ross's, Ross Associates plans.
So I'm confused. The Ross plan is not applicable anymore?
The Ross plan is, if I'm not mistaken, there are engineers for septic systems.
Yep.
Not so much building.
And so what date is that on the, oh, that was 2010? Okay, so that's not for this application.
Right, it's to show further there's no septic.
Yeah, that was just, yeah, that's the septic.
And that there's no non-conformant, non-conforming.
Okay.
Well, that's not for us to determine. I mean, if there are, then you won't get a building permit, but...
It's also not requiring an accessory dwelling approval.
Okay. Who is going to be in the second unit?
My future mother-in-law.
Okay. It's about the septic. The relationship of parking is a separate factor. And then we're just have to look at the condition that he understands that.
You do realize that once we issued a special permit, and you can, that is, needs to be renewed every three years through the Building Inspector's office?
Yes.
And if there's any changes in regards to information in the decision as it gets written, it will have to be notified through the Building Inspector's office to this board.
Can you say that one more time?
Okay, if you make any changes, like your future mother-in-law does not become your future mother-in-law. All right, or if she does and then leaves or whatever else, then those, that needs to be reflected back to the Building Inspector's office, which is also the zoning board office.
A change in the relationship. We'll all subterminate the permit unless you bring it back forward with a new relationship.
Got you.
Okay, anyone else?
Is this the blue house?
Yeah.
Okay, just to make sure I got the right place.
Someone with usually the junk outside? Yeah, I understand.
I think those were, the people that lived there, I think, were my first clients when I came here from law school.
Yes, was it?
Parents.
Yeah, yeah. We spoke, yeah.
Good.
Couple. That's right.
Okay.
Audience?
Are there any bidders, anyone to speak to this petition? I recognize the room. That's why I didn't ask, I'm sorry.
Do we get answers from the Building Inspector?
I didn't see any bidders when I went through my stack. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
All the, all those in favor closing, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. And any discussion? What do you think, Patrick? No problem?
No problem.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain, want to make a motion?
Don't you? Make the motion that we...
Oh, it's not Patrick making.
Oh.
Make a motion, then we close the hearing on the Great Road.
Make a motion to grant, yeah. Make a motion to grant. Make a motion to grant the special permit.
A motion to grant special permit.
For an accessory dwelling?
For an accessory dwelling on Great Road.
Hit the address, yep. 620.
620 Great Road.
Okay, second to that motion?
Under Section 173-58. Second.
Do you want to reference these drawings?
Second?
I did.
Oh. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay. You have your permit. You are able to act on that permit without waiting, but it's at your own risk. There's a 20-day appeal period. Since there's no opposition, you probably can start acting on that desk.
Oh, I can. Sorry.
You go to the Building Inspector, your building permits next.
Fair enough. Do I come back and see you guys for anything?
Well, unless you want to see us for something else. Not for this.
Can I borrow a pen? I just need to be back to the check they asked for.
Oh, I forgot about the check, Parrot.
Somebody, somebody would be calling.
Did she tell you how much?
She did, and I should have wrote it down when she told me.
She was ill tonight and didn't come, so I don't know what I'm supposed to be collecting from you.
I was like $44, I think.
It's for the advertising. Would you mind going to the office tomorrow to squirt it away?
I do.
You do mind?
I do, but I will, because you asked for my...
What's, you think it's $44?
It's, it's split between three of us. But I don't, does anybody else remember?
Did she tell you how much to bring, Mr. Field?
I gave him my check at the town hall while my application...
This is actually for advertising, and we bill the applicant now for advertising, so...
Oh, you do it?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Here for me to sign? If not, I'm going to ask you to...
Don't worry about it.
Should find you.
I'll stop by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Good luck, and good luck.
Do you guys have an extra set of plans?
Yes.
For the most recent ones. If you have an actual set, we're talking to you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Farnsworth, I have to stand down from the next hearing because I have a financial interest in the outcome of the case. Oh, thank you. And
Ellen and Rod, would you be alternate voting members?
Sure.
Sure. Be with me while I write things down. Be, you know, keep things in order. Okay, being at the hour in the past, 7:45, I opened the hearing. The petition from M&amp;M Realty Trust, Matt Fields and Michael Fields, for property at 22 Washington Drive.
Good evening.
Mr. Field?
Matthew Field and Michael Field. We're here to request, and we have drawings, I think, that our engineer had emailed and delivered for the offset of 22 Washington Drive. I have a full-scale drawing that I can pass around that encompasses the entire site with the offsets to the street. Where would I want to start?
We'll just leave it here.
The particular property that we're talking about is this property right here.[1787.91] We've come before you before with the same request for 18 Washington, and I believe it was 11 Washington, yes.
I know we done 18.
Yeah. So this is the particular property right here. It's on the farthest end of our property on Washington Street. There's an existing dwelling there right now.
For everyone, the small ones that we got earlier, it's in the top left-hand corner.
I can, I can show you.
It's kind of small, but.
Yes, sir, that one, that one.
Yep.
That one right there. And then a full set if you want to review that. The existing structure is a ranch-style right now. It is 860 square feet. We're proposing a three-bedroom drone that is 42 by 27, which is 274 square feet.
42 by?
42 by 27, which is 274 square feet larger than the existing dwelling now. We could make this dwelling larger, but we, we reduce the size to keep it with the same square footage of what we're building now. We're requesting the variance due to.
Is it variance or special permit?
Special permit.
Special permit. Clear here.
Due to the soils.
Special permit's not due to soil, we're under.
That's the reason that we're doing this.
Okay. We're doing it under section 173. If you follow the same that you had for the other one. 173-10, non-conforming uses and structures, B, for one, changed extension or alteration of an existing structure, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Section B. Okay, so in regards to that, because it's non-conforming, need to list out, and you should have done this before and had, okay. Follow with me, what is the lot size?
The lot size on this property here is?
2,000.
8,000.
8,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay, what's the frontage on the lot?
80 feet.
80.0?
80.0.
Okay, okay, and the existing building?
Yes, sir.
One that's coming down?
Yes, sir.
What is the front setback?
26.2.
26.2 feet. Side setback on the left side.
On the left side, looking at it from the street.
From the street, yep.
That would be the side, would be 12.5.
12.5, right side?
The right side is 37.6.
And the rear?
And the rear is fif, the rear is 41.4.
Okay, so you have a non-conforming lot size, non-conforming frontage.
Pre-existing, correct?
Pre-existing, pre-existing, non-conforming front setback, side non-conforming on the left. Right side is conforming, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and your rear is conforming. Okay, now, the proposed.
Yes, sir.
What is the front setback on the proposed?
14.7.
Okay, left side?
Left side. This side right here, 17.5.
Right side?
18.
18.0?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and rear?
57.5.
Okay, so the front is still non-conforming, but, so just increasing the non-conformity.
Yes, sir.
The left side is from 12.5 to 17.5. Now that brings that now into conformance. Side at, right side at 18, it was.
Was 37.6?
Greater than 15 before, and it's still greater than 15, so you're not getting anything there. And the rear was 41, and it's going to be 57, so you're not creating any new non-conforming there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Just had to go through all this and get all this information. Because on a special permit under a non-conforming structure, had to acknowledge all the non-conformities.
Yes, sir.
And then, if there are any new non-conformities that be created, if there were any new non-conformities, it then would become a variance. Whereas it is, there is no new non-conformities, it is just as a special permit. And as you know, Mr. Fields, that criteria for variance or criteria for special permits are a bit different.
Yes, sir.
Okay, having all that said.
What I also have here is some pictures of the structures that are up for the board to view.
Okay.
With the routines and the setbacks on all of the properties. I, I hope people drove by and saw.
No, of structures of, these are the other addresses?
These are all the existing homes that we've built that are on the site there now.
Okay, which, which houses?
This, this is 15.
15?
15 Lincoln, on the backside of the property.
Yep.
And. This is 18 Washington. I apologize, I don't have an 11, but it's, it's the exact same as this one with the garage on the first level.
Washington, what's this one?
It's, this is the same as, this is 18, but 11 Lincoln is, is that, without the garage. It's a drive, this would be a garage. I didn't bring a picture of that one.
Anybody wants to see them? What was the reason for relocating the building?
The reason for relocating is the septic permits that we obtained from the board of health put all the systems in the rear to make them conform with Title V. As you can see, all the systems are lined up in the rear. We now have a, a nice fence between the two property lines.
Okay.
And this system is installed, we did this one.
All right, and the distance between the septic system and the proposed location of the house is required by Title V? Okay?
We have to need the reserve in the offsets to the septic systems. That's why you'll see that on the inside of each one of these homes, on, on 18 Washington, for example, there is a port slab right here, there's a port slab on this one, and a port slab there to keep them, to keep them from the right offset to the second.
No basement space within a certain?
Yes, sir.
So in this case, the reserve area is closest to the house?
Correct.
And so you have a little port slab within the house?
Right here. And that's the same as the slab that you see over there?
Right here.
Yeah, they're, they're on every one of them.
Okay. Now, you've been before us for one of the other addresses in this department?
Yes.
I thought it was this one, wasn't it?
This one, this one.
18?
Yeah.
These two. These two.
For the board.
And we had a discussion about.
Back in April, yeah. May 22nd was the hearing on, on that.
That was 18 Washington.
18 Washington Drive. Yep. Jeff, any further questions?
I would also imagine, since you have the garage, you know, under or whatever, that you can't push it back anymore and put more slab in the back.
We can't, we can't.
Because then we don't have enough room.
I understand, okay, I'm just.
Yep.
We could actually make the house bigger and wider. We, we actually scaled it down from our drawings. On the footprint that was approved by the board of health, had a box of 47 feet. We've reduced it down to 42 feet to keep it, so we're not building monsters. I mean, they're, they're very pretty houses that, that fit in the.
Any question? All right, we've just got, Alan, Alan, so we've just given him a minute here. What I'm going to do, you know, is go through the board for any questions or comments. Then I will open it up to anybody in the audience who may have a question or a comment. John?
I don't have any questions right now, so far.
Rod?
What's the state of number 20?
The state of number 20?
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't even started that one yet.
So you'd be coming here?
We'd be coming back again for that one as well.
Okay, so we can't say that the small setback is comparable to the neighbor, because the neighbor doesn't exist yet. How far do you have to be from the reserve area?
20 feet.
20 feet, and what are you in this drawing?
On 20, we're at 20 feet. We're actually at 18 feet with a two-foot slab in, inside the foundation. So, we're 20 feet from the foundation wall that's going to be in the basement.
And you can't get a variance from the board of health to come closer?
Not, not under Title V with new construction.
If we go back any further, then we're going to lose the ability for, drive under garage with the elevation that we're at.
Alan?
So 18 is the one that is built?
Yes, sir.
Right next to that is, is the opening where the trailer is?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
And then next to that is what we're talking about?
Yep, the existing houses there right now.
But 18 has plenty of front, front setback.
Patrick, any questions, comments? All right. Anybody in the audience wish to, call or have a question? If so, need your name and address for the record.
28 Washington Drive, Bruce Rock.
Name?
Bruce Rock.
And the address again?
28 Washington Drive. So it'd be to the right of the proposed property.
Okay. Any question?
Yeah, so why don't we just, why don't we handle the middle house where you haven't built them yet too, instead of having? Why do we have to keep coming back? I mean, not, not. No, that's okay, I'm not offended by any question you ask. Because I'm just, I'm just curious, because you have the exact same thing.
It's very simple math, we have, we have 22, we have 22 Washington under agreement for that proposed floor plan.
Right.
So, I mean, if I had 20 on it, I'd be here for 20.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking. Because I mean, you did it for all the other properties, so.
Right.
And you're, based on the Title V, you can't go back.
No, sir.
Otherwise, I'd be asking you to go back, because again, that sits next to me. We're going to have cars parked all over that street. And in the wintertime, we can barely can get the plow down there as it is. I mean, you know, unless, the town's going to change something, you know, before long. There's going to be so many cars on that road, because they can't park anyplace, you only have one car garage.
No, we have two car, we have two car parking areas in front of the homes with a one-car garage.
On, on 18, on 22, we're going to have a two-car garage.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's going to be a two-car garage.
But I'm just, I'm just concerned that we're going to get people parking on the, on the roads there, and then we're not going to get plow service in the winter.
Okay, in regards, which is outside the permi, but there is a bylaw in the code of the town of Littleton that prohibits that or regulates that, so if there's any question, we need that.
Who will be enforcing that, is my question.
The Police Department and the Highway Department.
They should, I actually don't want to go on my road.
Yes. Okay, I'm, because I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Oh, yeah.
In the wintertime, you know, I'm out there shoveling my stuff off, and I, you know, I just, I don't want to.
It's absolutely a legitimate concern.
Well, well, I, I think that's a valid concern. I am concerned because, and if you didn't have a two-car garage, I would be very concerned, because, you know, the, the portion of the parking is only 14 or 15 feet from the property line.
That, well, that's actually, that's true and not true. Because if you look at this larger drone, the property line is here, the street is here.
Well, I know that, but we're talking about the property line.
Right.
Because the street could be widened and you don't, so, but, but, but I am saying you have a two-car garage.
Yes, sir.
And that seems like a reasonable thing.
This is going to be a one-car garage.
No, this is, this is two-car garage.
It's a two-car garage.
It's going to really come up on this one.
Really?
Because even to the street.
Can we wait till that one comes up?
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just maybe coaching you that maybe, you know, it's going to be a big concern.
Let's just deal with this one.
Okay, but one thing you could do is provide some additional paid parking.
We did on this one right here.
And we will, we will on this one as well, but what we don't want to do is encroach on neighbors.
Okay.
We've, we've, we've actually done very well with the tight area, and we don't.
And, and, you know, it's the best we can do right now. We could make this house bigger, we could make it another.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't affect that though.
It doesn't, no. We can make it wider, and then make it a little skinnier if we had to, but it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work with the garage situation, it doesn't work with the layout.
I guess I would say, this works barely. I, I hear you, and I'll take this. Well.
I was just going to ask a question, just because.
It's an excellent point.
Just because, you know, like I said, that's my, you know, them lining them up, I understand the Title V, and that, that's not a problem, but just my other concern is that, because we make a couple of changes now to this, then all of a sudden, we get more changes and more changes, and, you know, things change because somebody else.
Question?
Yeah, what do I consider a minimum driveway length?
Standard, standard size is 20 feet.
So we're.
Extended parking space is nine by 20, or eight by 18, or something like, nine by 18, or, you know, it's generally 20 feet deep.
Those cars are actually under 16 feet. But we have, but in this case, they do have a garage, so it's a little different, and there is additional.
But to answer his question, because, you know, can a standard car park in the driveway?
And not overhang the street?
And not have to park on the street, yes.
Unless you have a big SUV or something.
Well, but even then, I think in this case, you'd have, you know, it looks like you have over 20 feet.
We do.
Well, 20, 26, 20 feet to?
The actual inch of pavement.
To the pavement.
The curb.
Not to the property.
Today, but you can't rely on that.
Yeah.
And I would echo his concern on the next one, even though it's not part of the, the same kind of scenario.
I guess when this came up before, we felt that the grouping of the septics together, so that you would have these continuous mound instead of.
Dead elephants, we call them.
Yeah, was desirable both for, just from every point of view, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, under this particular section, and let me read this, and then I'm going to briefly pull the board. No extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there's a finding by the special permit vending authority, and that's the zoning one, that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. And what's being proposed is there is a single-family residential structure of a lot now. It's coming down, and there's going to be another one built. It's going to be the same use, just in a different location, and because of that, that requires a special permit. So, though I guess the, in the findings, we have to acknowledge that, now, we agree that there is no substantial, that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing. Everybody agree? Jeff?
That's what we have to find. Are we?
That's a finding.
Are we?
Generally acknowledging that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. All right, okay, John?
I agree.
Rod?
As long as you can get a couple of cars in the driveway.
Yes. Patrick? Okay. All right, any further discussion, or if not? Here a motion to close.
Move to close the hearing.
All right, I think this is fairly straight forward. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I hear a motion.
Motion to grant the special permit. Bruce went to this. Pursuant to this case 844A, 22 Washington Drive.
173-10B1 for 22 Washington Drive. As per the overall site plan and drawings submitted. Right. We did get, we don't have, we don't have those drawings, so just per the site plan submitted. All right. I hear, have a motion, do I have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving a special permit under 173-10B1 for 22 Washington Drive per the layout on the overall site plan by Ross Associates?
Michael Rubin.
I didn't, oh. Thank you. The last case was...
Yes, sir.
Just so used to seeing them. Okay. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Nay, granted.
Thank you very much for your time.
One word?
Yes, sir.
All right, when do you come back in again? Now, you've been through this process a couple...
Yes, sir.
Next time you submit, please give us the itemized listing, detailed information with the setbacks and everything else, so we don't have to, the office staff doesn't have to chase it down, and we don't get information at the last...
Won't happen again.
Okay, it just makes us...
Won't happen again.
More prepared, we can go quicker than this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're going to keep that drawn, Michael.
I don't know if we need that because we have...
Go through it?
Anybody want to report? Yes, sir. All in overall, picket house?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Because you're on site quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just didn't want to take minutes. I can't actually.
I think you can, I mean, the way it's drawn, I don't...
Talking about the one in the suite.
Yeah, that's a lot easier than the other one.
Okay, so we don't have anything further to talk about. Who wants to leave?
We're not doing 15 Great Road.
Is it on there?
Yeah, review for warranty requirements. Nothing came in?
You're not here.
As I know, nothing was submitted. Okay.
Didn't he come in, Gallagher was in?
Yeah, but Shelley was saying that they wanted to come in because they had something else going on, and that she'd been in touch with them all week, but you need to get something written to us, something written to us by today, the absolute latest, so we have something to meet tonight.
And I had asked her to put, to post it, so that if they brought it in, we'd have the ability to hear it. So they didn't bring it in, so we don't need to hear it.
Yep.
It's a discussion.
Right.
I think that was the reason why I met early.
I thought it was too, but we actually met early this month for that royal continuance. Oh, you're just in time. Would you like to make the motion to adjourn? No, we're just, we're just having one. Who wants to make it? Let's see, we need a...
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, do I need an alternate to vote?
Yes.
Rod, you're a voter, oh, no, you're a voter. All right. Bill makes the motion, Rod. Seconds.
Do you need money?
Oh, yeah.
I'll take money.
We all need money.
I gotta tell you, with the daughter in Cornell and two in private schools.